There you go. Here. Hit the gavel.
We're gonna see.
We're gonna call this meeting order.
It's gonna be ordered?
Mm-hmm. Call the meeting to order.
So.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Um. Our regular Board of Trustees meeting, the Village of Glenwood, Tuesday, November 18th, um, meeting at 7:02 PM. Can we stand by the pledge of allegiance? So can you stand?
... of the United States of America into the Republic of America. One nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Your paper's on the floor.
Ah. You can pick your paper up.
Do me a favor, put this paper just here. Now she's alive.
Oh, wow. Double, double treat. So, in there, you're going to read it to all of the presidents. As the mayor of the day, you're gonna read what you wrote.
Hello, my name is Leila Paisley Jones. I am seven years old. And I'm in second grade at Longwood Elementary School. My teacher's name is Ms. Nathan. I'm... My favorite subject at school is math. Sun... Wait, I do gymnastics every Sunday at Patty's All-American. When... When I grow up, I want... I'm going to be a nurse.
So that's all out there. And we're gonna put in this resolution. And then we're gonna see what the Board of Trustees have to understand. Because we don't want to know because... So you can get some rest.
Uh-huh. Yeah. We're breaking a minute early.
Mayor Tony Har, called Jesse, who was finishing day ten. Um, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Glenwood, Resolution Number 25, Code One Six. Resolution on... Mayor Charles as mayor of the day. Whereas the Village of Glenwood believes that the forty-two encourage young people. And whereas the Village of Glenwood is an elementary school student. Has shown curiosity, enthusiasm, and a desire to become mayor one day. And whereas the mayor and board trustees are proud to represent us, mayor of the day. Now therefore, we get resolved by the mayor and board trustees of the Village of Glenwood. And Charles recognized as mayor of the Village of Glenwood on this day, November 18th, 2025. The village will be in slavery for our goodness to learn. And the desire one day to become a nurse or a mayor. A happy anniversary question shall be presented to the mayor as a keepsake of a special...
Don't forget your, yeah. Don't forget your check.
Good luck.
Your lucky school, we love you every time.
Mom, Dad, did you wanna get a... No. With the resolution. Okay, y'all made them shower, we got this. Thank you, and again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, clerk, can you... Well, I guess I wanna get... Can I get a motion, um, to approve Resolution 20... Wait. Okay, I'm trying to rush. Let me start that. Clerk, can you call the row?
Trustee Brown.
That's all. Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Hadnot.
Here.
Trustee Mosley.
Yes.
Trustee Roll. Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Trustee Williams.
Thank you, the motion for the, uh, recognizing Leila Jones as mayor of Apex. Um, clerk, can you call the row?
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Roll. Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Hadnot.
Here.
Trustee Mosley.
Yes. Thank you. Um... Mask's not working? Okay. Um... A motion to approve the regular board me... Meeting minutes of November the 4th, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Camille, did you second?
That was me.
Uh, Trustee Taylor. Any questions?
Just a couple corrections.
Okay.
Form the clerk. This is a couple corrections.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Oh. Okay, I'm sorry.
Form the clerk, just a couple corrections.
Okay. Uh, clerk, do you have those?
Yes.
Corrections? Uh, any, uh, questions or corrections?
Uh, one of the corrections in public... The second one that spoke, he didn't say that Trustee Roll is like the civility pledge. That's not what he said. So I don't know where that... Correct that. Um... In the second correction on the chairman's report. Um... I asked, what was the original RDA agreement between Tuscan Gardens originally? But the second sentence where it says, "Trustee Roll asked, so we are only going to discuss the one..." I don't remember that being quote. That's not what... Correct. That's not what I said. So I just either asked him to either omit or quote me on the record.
Okay. Any other questions or corrections? Uh, Trustee Hadnot, are you willing to, uh, amend your motion to... Uh, motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November the 4th, 2025? With corrections noted by Trustee Roll?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Trustee Taylor. Clerk, call, um, call the row.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Hadnot. Trustee Mosley.
Yes.
Trustee Roll.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Public comments, three minutes. The clerk will time you. Um, this portion of the public comments is for anything that's on the agenda. No public comments. Um... Bill payable.
Bills payable... Payable for November 13th, 2025. Corporate fund, $247,008.54. Motor fuel tax fund, $9,269 even. Water sewer account, uh, $18,057.05. Glen Woody Golf Course, $25,380.16. For a total of all funds, $300,074.75.
I have a question. Or, I'm sorry, I gotta wait.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the row.
Trustee Roll. I'm sorry.
Right, did she have questions though before?
No.
No?
Questions? Right. She had a question?
Yeah, before the roll call.
Right.
I can ask a question. Okay.
And then you can answer your question.
Okay, um... So one of the vendors is, the sign vendor, says that one of the signs was repaired for $1,536.14. Um... Brian, I think you told me that it was the sign that was in front of Glen Woody, correct? Or you didn't know? I'm not... I wanna know.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what it is. I didn't have the actual bill in front of me, but that's the only sign I know of that we've been doing work with.
What happened to that sign? Do you know village administrator, what happened to it?
It appears to have been struck by a vehicle. It's the extent of our knowledge on what happened.
So... It costs 1,500 to get the sign repaired? Why don't we just get another one? Unless that sign... Unless the original sign costs more than the repair?
If I'm not... Well, that was a new sign, correct? That was a replacement.
That was a replacement? So who paid... So do we... Are we insu... Are those signs insured? So every time somebody knocks it down or damages it, or, God forbid, something like that, we have to keep coming out of pocket to pay for it? Or is there insurance that covers that?
Well, our general liability policy would... The deductible would be significantly higher than paying the cost to replace the sign.
Our deductible is $25,000. Any other questions? Trustee Roll? You had a question?
No.
No? Okay.
Clerk, can you call the row?
Trustee Roll.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Hadnot.
Yes.
Trustee Mosley.
Yes.
Motion passed, uh, Jensen payroll.
Payroll for November 14th, 2025. Uh, administrative, $18,016.36. Public Works, $11,684.31. Police Department, $173,061.54. Fire Department, $21,095.91. Senior Center, $259.50. Elected positions, there's a small typo here that's missing the period between the 1-3. So it's actually $1,071.31. Sewer and water, $21,699.43. Glen Woody Golf Course, $27,259.48. For a grand total payroll of $274,141.84. I'd like you to know that there was, um, holiday payout per the police contract. That's why this is significantly higher than normal. Um, and that was just under 60,000 payout.
And what holiday is?
What holiday?
Let me get a motion if you hurry. Can I get a motion for approval payroll, uh, November 14th, 2025? Uh, for a total payroll of $274,141.06. Uh, questions?
Second.
Oh. Uh, Roll and Taylor.
So yes, uh, what, what holiday was included in this payroll?
So the police work on all holidays during the year. So this is a one-time payout for the whole year. So it's not for one holiday, it's for the aggregate of all holidays.
Okay. Thank you.
So it was only, um, holiday pay? Or holiday pay overtime? Or this overtime and holiday pay?
No, that, that 60,000 is just the holiday pay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Clerk, call the row.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Hadnot.
Yes.
Trustee Mosley.
Yes.
Trustee Roll.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Um, just for the record, that, uh, the last board meeting, uh, Trustee Roll, uh, Trustee Taylor, and Trustee Brown wanted the overtime, uh, breakout per, uh, payroll. So they, uh, are in receipt of the total payrolls for October 31st payroll, as well as November 14th payroll by each employee's name, title, hours worked, um, salary, and, uh, hours worked of overtime and that overtime. Um, so... Wanted to let them know that they did receive the requested information. No communication, uh, from the mayor's office, uh, attorney report.
So, um... Uh, I'm sorry, um, requested approval is amended ordinance number, I'm sorry, Resolution 2025, program one, implementing municipal grocery retailers' occupation tax and municipal grocery occupation tax for the Village of Glenwood. Um, the only difference is that we received, we finally filed the resolution. The Department of Revenue sent in a letter back asking that, just for clarification, where you see reference to section two above, it's now asked, it asks that we change that to reflect 94, uh, 500.
Yeah.
So you're just replacing, it's just a clarification that the Department of Revenue wants, and that's what happened.
And that's highlighted on page four of the amendment of, uh, requirements from the Illinois Department of Revenue, um, just that one section. Can I get approval of, um, motion approval of amended Resolution 25, 2025, 011, implementing the municipality grocery realit... Real... Realtors' occupational tax?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. So is this the tax that the governor wa... Uh, revoked from us?
I'm sorry?
Is this the tax that the governor, um, wants to suspend or repeal?
This is the, in relation to, uh, eliminating the grocery tax. Municipalities who were receiving, uh, the 1% grocery tax, it will expire, um, January the 1st, unless we had a motion to, uh, continue. We would be grandfathered in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, will you call the row?
Trustee Mosley.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Hadnot.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Roll.
Yes.
Motion passed. Village Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items coming up this Saturday. The first is the Secretary of State's Mobile DMV event. If you have signed up for that event, you should have received communication from me via email earlier this week, um, reminding you of your appointment time, reminding you of what you need to bring with you for your appointment. Um, if you have not signed up and you would like a spot at that event, we've had a couple of last-minute openings, um, excuse me, with people dropping out as, um, they've gotten appointments sooner. So if you'd like to sign up for that, we have two or three openings available. You can email me at jpatton@villageofglenwood.com. Um, the first two to th... First three people to email me will be slotted into those spots that we have openings for. Uh, that is from 10 to 2 here in, in the boardroom on Saturday. Um, also on Saturday, from 9 to noon is the Village's Turkey Giveaway. Um, that was to the first 100 people to sign up. Uh, as I walked into the room tonight, I believe there were still six openings available for that. So if you have not signed up for that yet, you can go to the Village's website, click the link to sign up. Um, I would like to thank the Nellie Prather Foundation, as well as Soulful Creations, and a, uh, and the various village staff that have donated various items for that, um, as well as TNJ Meets for their partnership with the turkeys. That will be, again, from 9 to noon at Public Works. If you signed up for that and received your confirmation from me, you can go to Public Works anytime between 9 and noon Saturday to pick up your turkey and your food box. Um, thank you to Village Engineer Dave Schilling for putting the strong arm on deconstruction in IDOT to finally get the bridge work done and the bridge open. Um, I did say, we hope to have it done before Christmas, all of those times I was being snarky about it, but thanks, Dave, for your hard work and staying on them there. I'm glad to say the bridge is open and it will stay open all winter. Um, street sweeping, tentatively with, uh, weather permitting, street sweeping will begin, uh, November 24th. Please visit the Village's website to take a look at the map. There are six different days for street sweeping. The, um, app is on the Village website. When, the day that your area is identified for, uh, please do not park on the street between 7 and 3, um, so that the street sweeping can go smoothly. Um, along with that leaf pickup, we have two more Tuesdays left in the leaf pickup program. Um, Glenwood Roller Rink. I am happy to announce, as some of you may have seen on Facebook this afternoon, um, a couple closed on the purchase of the old Glenwood Roller Rink, Roller Rink, um, earlier today. They own a roller rink currently in the city of Chicago. They're looking to expand here to Glenwood and reopen the roller rink in the future as a roller rink here. So that's great news. Uh, more to come on that as we get it. I just talked to the gentleman this afternoon when he informed me that he closed. And finally, after, um, a long process, the Village's new updated site should be online by tomorrow morning. Our hope was to have it online this morning, so I could announce that today. There were some glitches overnight as the company worked to port everything over, but the, the target is to have it online by tomorrow morning. So everybody should log on and crash the Village website tomorrow, trying to see the new beautiful website that we've got. Other than that, I'd like to wish everybody, from my family to yours, a happy Thanksgiving, a healthy holiday, and, um, we'll see everybody after the holiday. Thank you.
Any department reports? Um, the board do have all the department reports, uh, in their packets. If there's nothing to add. Any trustee reports?
Yes, I...
I have one, Your Honor. I'd like to invite all members of the board and the public to the next Ethics Committee meeting on Thursday, November 20th, at 6:00 PM sharp. And to inform everybody that there will be a survey for the public, for Village employees, and for Village elected officials. Thank you.
Any other trustee reports?
I have one. Glenwood Forest Residence Association, that's the name of it, it's not Homeowners Association. Again, it's the Glenwood Forest Residence Association. Our meeting is tomorrow, which going forward would be every third Wednesday of the month at 6:30 at the Forest Field House, that's 325 East Center Street, 60425. Um, also, we're, I, I really want to, I don't know how many people live in the forest here. But if you don't live in a forest and you know neighbors that live in the forest, I really ask you, would you please spread the word that we are trying to organize? Um, we are the largest subdivision in Glenwood, so it's not easy. Um, but we're up for the challenge, and if anybody would please just spread the word, it's on Facebook. We have our own Facebook page now, so you can join the Facebook page as well, which is still Glenwood Forest Residence Association. We would love for you to join us. Uh, you don't have to just live in the forest to come. If you just wanna come and just come and support, please come and support. And we look forward to seeing everybody that will tomorrow at 6:30.
Any new business? Old business?
Wait a minute, I have something, I think it's new.
I'm sorry?
I, I think it's new this time. I, I guess something, because we mentioned this at our meeting. So it's, it's new to hear.
Trustee Brown, do you have new business?
Yes, this is what I'm saying. This is new now. We, we spoke to, um, the Glenwood Police Department about possibly getting a stop sign on Rose Street. There is, there's a stop sign one way on Rose, but because it's not the other way, there have been many almost collisions there. It's, it's, it doesn't make sense why it's not a four-way stop sign instead of just a two-way stop sign. So if we can, I don't know, you know, what the procedure of looking into that would be, but we really, in the forest, would really like someone to look into getting another stop sign at Rose and whatever that cross street is.
Thank you.
I think Cedar, Cedar, South Cedar, or something like that. It's really dangerous over there.
Okay. Any other new business? Old business? Open to the public, uh, three, uh, minutes. Clerk, we'll time you, we'll time you, and this section is open to the public. Uh, anything? You can step up, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gladys Robinson. I address the 7480. Name is Gladys Robinson, I address the 748 and Second Street. My question is, being a senior citizen, do we have a program for someone to clean our snow? I know we have a driveway. I'm willing to pay if we have a program to clean my sidewalk because I'm not able to do it. Do we have anything like that in place?
No, the only, the only program the village has is the driveway apron program, which you spoke about already, there is not a sidewalk cleaning program or a full driveway cleaning program available through the.
Can we look into that as a form, someone, get someone to do that, and we can just service?
Can we?
So we've had conversations about it, we've spoken with our insurers, who have advised that the village not enter into agreements to clean snow on private property, rather allow, you know, residents, obviously, we can make aware vendors that we know of in the area that are providing that service, but for the village to recommend a vendor or to entertain, or enter into a contract for that, our insurance company has advised us because of liability reasons not to enter into private property, snow cleaning.
Right. Ms. Gladys, I will get with the village administrator, we'll look into it and, and get back with you. Any other public comments? Good evening.
Oh, this is neat, just two small things. Oh, you don't have to, okay, two small things, one, I want to say that the hallway decorations that's on the utility poles looks great for the village, and it really is bringing the village out, so I wanted to let you know, thank you guys for that. And secondly, I want to personally thank Eric from the Fire Department, is his name, Eric? I think you got an Eric on the Fire Department. He came out a couple of weeks ago because I had like a gas smell in my home, and so he came out a couple of weeks ago and turned out to be like a minor gas leak, in which it wasn't that bad, it wasn't the cause of the smell that I was having in my house, anyway, he stuck through the entire process, he called Night Court to come out and waited on Night Court, and they came out and they checked everything inside and out, and I just want to thank Eric for doing that.
Thank you. We'll make sure that he gets the message. Any other public comments? With there being no other comments, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Clark, can you call the row?
Trustee Hadnot. Trustee Hadnot.
Yes.
Trustee Roll. Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Brown.
Yeah.
Trustee Mosley.
I would like to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, safe Thanksgiving, enjoy your family, your feast, be safe, and have a good evening and safe travels home, thank you for coming out.
Please join us at the Chicago Heights.
Okay.
I have to leave early from work, but. That's a bad day for me, but.
Hey, Liam, Friday night, hey, good.
But I was. Okay, looking forward to it.
Trustee Mosley.